Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Bloomfield Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is October 16th, and it's now seven o'clock. We do have a quorum, so I'm calling this meeting to order and ask you to please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which stands one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Walters, would you read our opening statement?
Yes, Mr. Harris. Good evening. As Vice Chair of the Bloomfield Board of Education, I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Bloomfield Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Bloomfield Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. Meetings of the Board are open to the public. It is the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will not be confined to the time -- will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum, courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cellphones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that the proceedings be accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system, and thank you for your interest in the Bloomfield Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Next item on our agenda, approval of the minutes of our special meeting on September 4th, 2018. Mr. Walters?
I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the minutes from the September 4th, 2018 special board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Edits?
When I extend through?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, I understand too. I was in Bermuda.
No, I know. Oh, you're just making note of that?
Yeah, making note, I understand.
Okay, thank you. Any edits at all? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Two. It does pass. Our student representative report tonight from Bloomfield High School, coming by Tabidi Bass and Olivia Cooper. Please proceed.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
My name is Olivia Cooper, and I'm a senior at Bloomfield High School.
My name is Tabidi Bass, and I am also a senior at high school, and we are Bloomfield High School's representatives.
So, we both participate in several different activities at Bloomfield. For example, I'm in the National and Spanish Honor Societies, and I'm Vice President of the Multicultural Club, and I help students from Spanish-speaking countries get accustomed to coming to school in America.
And I participate mainly in athletics, which you can also find me in clubs as well. I participate in cross-country, track and field. I am also a part of the Gay Straight Alliance and National Honor Society.
The next slide. So, the first slide you have presented here is from the BHS Open House that took place on September 13th. It was a well-attended event, and our English teacher, Ms. Henchy, put together the board. Many people got well accustomed to the school, and it was a great turnout overall.
This is the Save a Life Tour. Every year we have this tour. As long as you have PE, you can attend this tour, and you basically just take it -- you sit in the driver's seat, like in a simulator, and your person, like your parallel in the simulator is drunk, and you can see, like, the conditions that you go through while going drunk. Judgment, vision, everything. So, it was great for the students to learn. We had students like Amelia Lee Lake and Clint Miller participate, and that was really good for them.
So, the next event that we have here is BHS hosting students from China. There's a school in China that has a partnership with GEMS, and the students from China also came to our school because Bloomfield is a bit bigger and an all-around experience. They got to shadow some students for the day, and they were given an American-style lunch, so they had ribs and mac and cheese, and a lot of them said they had a really fun time.
This was -- this is the Bloomfield Center of Nursing and Rehabilitation. The senior citizens got a new mascot and are now named as the Bears. Bloomfield students attended the announcement and hosted a little pep rally for the newly named members. We made up chairs, did chants, you know, crowned the new mascot, welcomed it, everything.
So, on October 10th, we had the SAT Day, and for a lot of seniors, we were very excited because it was the last SAT that we took in school. We, in the pics -- in the pictures you see, we had a lot of prep for the SAT. A lot of people said overall that they felt well-prepared, and there was math tutoring offered before the SAT and after to make sure that people were comfortable with the subjects, and the response from a lot of the seniors and a lot of students was that they felt like the school really equipped them well to succeed on this SAT.
Norwalk Public Schools had visited Bloomfield High School on October 11th. They -- Bloomfield provided different sources to help out the Norwalk Public Schools system, you know, and trying just to be helpful, insightful, you know, help another personnel, you know, give them different types of advice.
The next event that we have here is the BHS Football Team being undefeated through homecoming. A lot of people like myself are really prideful about this school. We have a sophomore, his name is Darren, and he has the most passes in the state right now, and also, we play Avon on Saturday, so a lot of people are really excited. Come to a football game, please. It's, uh, yeah.
One o'clock?
One o'clock. Next, we have a special thank you from a family who left their cellphone in the bleachers, and one of our custodial staff, his name is Cliff. He went and delivered the cellphone personally, so I'm just going to read the letter for you. It says, "I'm sure this is not news for you, but I just wanted to reach out and tell you about our experience last Friday while Bloomfield hosted the Tallinn High School Girls Volleyball Team. It was my first time at your school, so I must have appeared lost in the parking lot while searching for the gym. Some of the football players outside noticed and came to me asking if they could help. They walked me to the door and wished us a good game. After the game, the varsity football coach and her team congratulated us on our win and made a point to tell my daughter how well she played. Upon returning home, we realized we had accidentally left a cellphone behind in the bleachers, and a member of your staff, Cliff, managed to find the cellphone -- managed to find the contact information on it, called my husband, and made arrangements to meet us on Saturday morning to return it. I don't know his last name, but he was amazingly nice, and we're grateful for his kindness. As parents of athletes, we visit many schools, and the students and staff we met at Bloomfield High are some of the best we've seen. I noticed your vision and core values identify contributing positively to society and community as a whole. You've definitely nailed that one. Keep up the good work."
Well, before entering the new school year, BHS staff and administration all went door by door to every incoming freshman to give them a nice welcome, inviting them to have a little cookout, have some fun, get, like, acquainted with this school, and just relax and just give a little shake-off before the school year started. So, that was pretty great. We had fun, had a whole lot of food, ate well, so it was very nice.
We also have the Dick Pink Game that just took place, and this is where our BHS Girls Volleyball Team raises awareness for breast cancer. There was also a dress down that took place to raise some funds for breast cancer awareness, and for me personally, I have someone who suffer from breast cancer, so it's really nice to have the school really bring attention to it and represent that they do care and they are aware, so it was nice.
The college fair actually took place today, so that was helpful to me and Olivia. Hundreds of schools were there, and they were just giving us a little bit of help and deciding where we want to go, what we should do in terms of college, what we should look for, types of environment that you like, different sorts of things that would interest us, and it was just, like, so very helpful to us, so we were very appreciative.
So, what's coming up at BHS? On October 17th, Don White is going to be visiting. On October 19th, the girls soccer versus Connord is taking place at 3:45, and on October 22nd, girls volleyball versus Hartford Public is taking place at 5 o'clock.
And on October 26th, boys soccer goes against Hartford Public at 3:45 PM. November 4th, Mr. White runs the NYC Marathon. That's a big deal for me because I run cross-country, so you know I gotta go and support. November 7th, National Honors Society induction ceremony will take place at 1 o'clock PM.
Thank you so much for listening to us. Have a nice meeting.
Any questions for us? Mr. Fregman.
Quick question. Today you were talking about colleges. Which colleges are you off in? Tell us what your name is.
Absolutely.
Hello again. I am going to be majoring in Biology or Microbiology, depending. I want to be a veterinarian, so the top three schools on my list are UMass, Amherst, UConn, and Southern.
Good job.
And I will be majoring in Criminal Justice, going to pre-law. My top schools are University of Tampa, University of South Florida, and University of Central Florida, so.
Somebody wants to get out of the cold weather. One date I'm going to add to your calendar is the October 20th, the football team is playing at Avon on Saturday at 1 o'clock. Just a reminder, I'm going to call you as you have signed up. Each speaker has two minutes to make a presentation. Please give us your name and your address. First up, Mr. Tony Smith.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening to the Board. My name is Tony Smith. I live at 37 Maple Avenue in Bloomfield, Connecticut, and this is my first time coming up to a meeting. I'm sure I'll be attending many more. I'm affiliated with the Metacom Elementary School, more so than my wife is the music teacher, and I assist her with the Boys Choir and other concerts that go on there. I've been a resident now for about 13 years here inside of the Bloomfield. In Hartford, I had an extensive background in working with children, with kids. I was on the Board of Directors for 19 years at the I Have a Dream Program, and I'm coming to you this evening because I just have some concerns that may or may not be already addressed, but my first issue is with the patronizing of students' behavior, and particularly bad students. The things that they do in school, and to give you an example, you know, in some of the schools, kids get extra basketball time, they get extra computer time if they're good inside of the class, and I think that it's an issue that needs to be addressed more so because I've noticed a pattern where as you get kids who are basically decent kids, good kids, doing what they're supposed to, and they feel kind of short-slided, and then the next thing you know, they're acting up. They're acting out because they want to be put on a plan. I'm not saying the plan is bad, I just think it needs to be a control thing that everybody's doing it. Everybody in the school is doing it, all the teachers are on the same page with the principal, the Board knows what's going on, and it hasn't been that, okay? And I've witnessed this myself, where some teachers will do one thing, other teachers will do other things, and next thing you know, kid goes, if he can't get his little incentive, he disrupts the whole classroom for the day. He's just out of sorts, or she is out of sorts. That was my first issue. The second one is that I think that we need to come up with a better way of assisting teachers and administration when it comes to removing disruptive kids from the classroom. I don't think a teacher should have to stop teaching for hours, and everything goes on the uproar for all the other kids who know what they're supposed to be doing and are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Please, please wrap it up, Mr. Smith.
Oh, my two minutes up already?
And actually, you're at two -- actually, you're at 2:30.
Okay. All right, the last thing is the contacting of parents on all negative behavior, not just when they're really out of sorts, but, I don't know, when I sent my kids to school, they knew what they were supposed to do, and if they did not do it, it wasn't giving them a second chance, it was contacting me.
Thank you. Tiamina Fallins.
I am here as a parent of a Bloomfield student, but I'm not here only for my child, I'm actually here for all of the children of Bloomfield. I feel that they all could benefit from an increase in technology. On the high school level, they utilize Google Classroom, but a lot of the classrooms don't have sufficient Chromebooks for them to adequately use the program. So, technology like that gives our students full use of programs like that. We can't use these programs and don't have the resources to support use of the program. So, lack of resources when you're talking about technology. I think we definitely need to increase technology. Also, I believe that all of the schools could benefit from a small classroom size. Speaking to what the gentleman before me said, he spoke to behavioral issues. Our kids are at a point where a lot of them are not where we need them to be as far as grade level expectations are concerned. The mass majority of them are not, so having a smaller classroom size would give us the ability to reach more students and make larger gains, which is something I believe all of us would want. Resources to implement those, you know, smaller classroom sizes. If we don't have the resources to meet the needs, once we reduce the classroom sizes, we're still going to have that great gap, and the gap is just getting bigger. So, I'm here advocating for more resources for our children. It is greatly needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrine Davis.
Name is Patrine Davis, address 84 Englewood Avenue, Bloomfield. Okay, so I'm going to do this real fast. Looking at the Bloomfield School District Report for the year 2016 to 2017, the cost to educate one student was listed as $20,879, and I'm sure today, that was a couple years ago, it's over $21,000 per student. So, we spent over $50,46,709 back in 2016, 2017, we spent that, and again, I don't have the numbers for this year, but I'm sure it's way more than this, with an enrollment of 2,157 students at that time. Even though we spent this huge amount, it still doesn't benefit our children. Majority of them are still struggling. Even with intervention in the classroom, we're still lacking the vital resources, meaning we don't have the tutors in place. You have different models you implemented, but it doesn't work because you don't provide the support, so our kids are still at the same level or even worse than before. So, we know that they deserve more. We love our children. We love them because there are -- we're not sure if you do, but we actually love them and we want the best for them. That's why I'm here today. As parents, we actually expect, if we actually put them in your care, you should provide, you know, as best as possible with the amount of money you have. You should be able to do so. When we compare, say, for example, I looked at Granby, that same year, they have 1,880 students, and their expenditure was only $29,895,477. They spent only $14,888 per student, and we look at their grades, it's way, way higher. When you look at their S-Back scores, their SAT scores, it's a lot better than ours. So, I know we can do more, I'm not sure. I looked, I saw that most of, well, I know over $7 million, it said, went to administration and support. I'm not sure of that number because, you know, anybody can write a number.
Could you please wrap it up?
But also, when you look at West Hartford as well, they have over 9,000 students, their expenditure $156 million, just over that, and they spent only $15,000 per student. Again, their SAT in English was 570, and in Math, 559, so we need to maybe invite these, go to see these schools, I mean, visit them or invite them or whatever, find out what they're doing. They're our neighbors. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Foster.
This is Liam Walters. Most of my actions are already addressed.
Thank you.
I want to take my time.
Vedanji Graham-Daze.
You know, parents have been asking for resources, asking for resources. The teachers, the principals, everyone has been asking for resources. The thing about it is that we have the money to fulfill their requests, and the problem is the money is not going to where it's supposed to be, and that is to the students, all of the tools that the teachers and the students will need so that the students can perform at their best, okay? Now, to be proud of being one of 30 districts, one of the Alliance District, you are going into your six-year now. You're on there for another four years because you have to go in five-year intervals. When will you start allocating those funds from the Alliance District directly to the students versus the salaries of extra staff that you feel like you need? I mean, I need everyone here to think hard about the impact that this is having immediately and in the future of the kids in our community. Who do you think is going to take care of you, or where do you think you're going to live when you get older? Do you plan on moving to Florida? But if you plan on living here, how are you training the workforce to stay here? Or do you expect them to leave like most millennials are leaving the state right now? We expect you to treat our kids and to give them the tools needed as if they were your own, plain and simple, and I'm really just getting tired of having the same conversation, and you guys just aren't producing the results. It's the less smiling, hold hands, sing kumbaya, and pretend that everything is okay. You guys know and we know that it's not, and it's about time that you become more proactive to doing the right things for the right reasons for the future of our kids.
Thank you. For your information, our Superintendent has taken copious notes, and he will address each concern individually with parents. Now time for the Superintendent's Report, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Thompson.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, colleagues, parents, and our television viewing audience. The first item on the agenda of the Superintendent's Report is the Master Board of Education Manual presented by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education to Chairman Donald Harris Jr., and this prestigious honor is bestowed to Board members who have attended numerous CADE-CAPS conventions, CADE workshops and programs, and have acquired a variety of skills, knowledge, and abilities related to the functions of a Board of Education. Congratulations to Mr. Harris on this great accomplishment. As stated by CADE, your commitment to public education and to the children in your community is admirable.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda is the recognition of Bloomfield's literacy coach, Rose Rose, and Rose is being recognized by the Connecticut Commissioner of Education, Dr. Diana Winzel, for her exceptional work in the district as a literacy leader. She's the first recipient of the Commissioner's Literacy Leadership Award, and congratulations to Rose Rose. And I would like to --
Maybe we can all just congratulate you, our Board of Education. We can all just congratulate Rose, if you don't mind.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Congratulations. That's from the state, state of Connecticut. Commissioner of the state of Connecticut. Out of all the districts, they're recognizing this Rose. Okay, so, she's got to be doing something. She's got to be doing something. They had 169 towns to pick people from, so she's got to be doing something as the Commissioner of the state of Connecticut.
That is correct. She's doing an exceptional job.
I just want to get that on the record, all right?
The third item is, on July 19th, 2018, Whittenberry Early Maga School achieved accreditation by the National Association for Education of Young Children. That's the N-A-E-Y-C. The administration, teaching staff, and families of Whittenberry Early Childhood Maga School are all to be congratulated for earning this mark of quality represented by the National Association for Education of Young Children. Accreditation of early learning programs, and I would like to invite Principal Lisa Illes to speak about the accreditation process, and if you'll please come up and just say a few words about the process.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Good evening, everyone. I am so pleased to be able to just speak very briefly about the I am so pleased to be able to just speak very briefly about this accreditation process. The staff worked extremely hard to do this. And if you could just look, I hope you can see that the scores are 100% plus on the right-hand column in all of the 10 areas. Areas seven and eight are combined because there weren't very many in each area, but this is quite a feat. So the goal was to meet at least 80% of assessed items in the program's standards. And the raw score that's above 100% indicates that one or more emerging practices, not just a solid standard that's already approved, emerging practices are also met. And then the adjusted scores that were 100% are also adjusted to 100+. So that includes all of the emerging standards that are there. So I just really wanna have a lot of praise for our teachers and entire staff and in the words of the assessors, from the food service people to the custodians, to the special ed staff and the secretaries, that's all what made the difference. So just very quickly, I just wanted to say it was a two-year process and the structure of this district supported the organization needed to excel in this manner. In advance, I had the structures all set up to set up the schedule of work groups and trainings over the two years. And so most half-day, several full-day professional developments were there for the staff to understand the process and go through the teaming. There was a portfolio and there was an actual observation with assessors in nine of our 18 classrooms. And I just wanna highlight that it's valid until 2023. And that because of the professional environment and our hiring practices here in Bloomfield, we have highly qualified staff working at the preschool level, which is not the case in even all districts, especially for our instructional assistants. And I do believe that that makes the difference. The four priorities help the teacher teams to work, focusing on all of these standards without knowing all of it just meshes. The focus on curriculum assessment and instruction, we're using a research-based Tier One curriculum to address all learners. And then we also use weekly data teams, SRBI meetings, to meet the needs of learners who might be falling off the mark. We work hard on the curriculum, intersecting the farm trips that we take and the school's growing curriculum. We have a greenhouse and all of that comes, see it someday, if you would like to, I will give you a tour. And our parent engagement committee and school climate committee, I wanna highlight that as well because we would have never met those standards if it weren't for the work of the teachers in those particular committees. Working on the parent compact, that was a district format. Our many family evenings that is supported by the district and the Alliance for Bloomfield's Children that allows our parents to have an opportunity to engage. We use the Second Step Curriculum, which is used in many of the elementary schools here. So we have that vertical alignment, always going through our monthly meetings as administrators as well. And the continuous improvement efforts and accountability to central office also help. I wanna end with just a special thanks to Samantha Straker, Wittenberry's instructional coach, who partnered with the process and assisted the teachers greatly with gathering evidence for the classroom portfolios as well as teaming intimately with me to conduct the trainings necessary over the two years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Guzman.
This financial report that is being passed around is as of October 10, 2018. As you will note on the one-page summary report, approximately 84% of the budget has either been encumbered or expended, leaving a balance of $6.7 million or 16% of the amount appropriated by the town council. As you may know, at the beginning of the year, we had been on a budget freeze. And then we will continue to monitor all the accounts throughout the year to ensure that we remain within budget. The district is in a budget freeze, as I mentioned, where expenditures and encumbrances are limited to educational programming, supplies and materials, health and safety matters, as well as utilities. On the one-page summary report, you'll just note that the object code for certified staff is one that we're looking at and will continue to review throughout the year. But as I mentioned earlier, we still have a balance of approximately $6.7 million that has not been encumbered or expended at this particular point.
Mr. Ayk.
Just from my identification, the budget, according to this report right here, the actual budget is $42,162,165?
Yes.
So I heard tonight, just public comment, that it was $51 million.
Yes.
I've been here off and on, I've never known the budget to be $51 million. So I'm not sure where that information is coming from. Was the budget $51 million last year?
No. That amount is coming from the performance report, I believe, and the strategic performance report, it's two-year-old data. That report encompasses expenditures from all sources. So you have the local budget, which is approximately $42 million, plus on top of that, you have state and federal grants that add up to the $50 million for that particular year. So that report encompasses all revenue sources going to the education.
Mr. Fradman.
I have two questions for you, Mr. Guzman. Under miscellaneous, what is included in that? It says our reclassified budget was $168,000. What was included in miscellaneous?
Which account are you on? What page?
What page? The...
The single page.
Single page. Single page.
Item 14, excuse me.
Item 14. I'm gonna have to get you the specific items that are included in there. But thinking of items that may come up in an emergency that have not been planned, projected contracted services that we haven't anticipated, but I'll have to get you a specific line item on there.
I think you would all like to see what was, you know, for $168,000. The other question I have is, our state funding, I know that's been going down. What is the projection for this year and how does it look for the upcoming years we prepare the budget?
Well, the upcoming year, 2019, 2020? Well, that's far off. And as you know, the legislative session will begin in December, in February, but the governor will come out and have his proposals for all sorts of state-level grants. At this particular point, we have not heard anything about reductions in current-year grants. Having said that, I do know that one of the state offices relative to the magnet grants, the two magnets grants that we have, there's been a word of caution to districts anticipating, perhaps like last year, a 5% to a 7% reduction. That's just a cautionary word. There's nothing that's been formalized relative to those magnet school grants. I know that the Alliance Grant this year received a modest increase from the previous years, but at this particular point, we anticipate that all state grants that have been appropriated at the state level will come our way. And we're just keeping an eye on the magnet school grants at this point.
And just for, you know, for the audience at home, what was, how much did we receive, less or more, or regained from the state this year for this budget year? I know there was a loss over there. Did you see?
In terms of this year?
Yeah. I know it wasn't constant, so...
No, I think there may have been a slight increase for Bloomfield relative to the education cost-sharing grant for this year, slight increase. As I mentioned before, the Alliance Grant also had an increase. So as far as the funding for this year, I think we're fine, except for the two magnet school grants that we're keeping an eye on.
And also keep in mind, election next month and legislature, which will be a new legislature going into session in February with a new governor. We know not who that will be. And stay tuned. Stay tuned.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Moore.
Just, can you just help me with this? On the contractual services, exactly who was that? Because I'm looking at transportation, is that a contract service?
Oh, what was it?
Contractual service number four?
Single page.
Yeah, single page.
Contractual services are anything that we have a contract for, which includes inspections. We have asbestos inspections that we have to perform. We have fire alarm inspections that we have to perform. Those are all contracted services that we have with specific companies to perform those inspections. So there are myriad of those kinds of contracted services that we undergo every year.
Okay. And then the transportation, I'm assuming that's just the bus service?
Yes. Transportation would be two primary contracts, one with DACCO for the regular transportation to the various schools. And then we have another one that's with the access transportation company that transports children going to outside placement facilities, children that require special education needs. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have, just for the Alliance Grant, how much was the grant, Mr. Guzman?
The grant for this year is in the area of $870,000, I believe.
Now, that grant, those grants, are they specific to certain programs or how is that money?
They're specific expenditure requirements in terms of what's an allowable cost and what's not an allowable cost. So we have to adhere to those requirements on any grant, no matter where they come from, whether it's a private source. Typically, they'll have an allowable cost in terms of where those monies can be spent. And we have to adhere to those.
Everybody? Okay, I thank you. We have nothing under rule business. Item nine, new business, S-Back results, report, Dr. Silver and our building principals.
Good evening to our members of our board, Dr. Thompson, and certainly our families at home and our community that's here tonight. Thank you so much for coming. Tonight, we're going to share our Smarter Balanced Results. There we go. Okay. So tonight we have our third opportunity that we're taking to share our Smarter Balanced Results for 2018 with our community. We've previously shared them with our curriculum committee, with our town council, and again tonight, with our community. And our process will be that our principals will present the strengths, observations and implications, and next steps regarding the work that we're doing in our schools. And the benefit, the payoff here is that our board of education and our community will be well-informed regarding our plans and they'll have a stronger command of the knowledge relating to the Smarter Balanced Assessment. Within our school district this year, I am so pleased to share that our enrollment numbers have increased over last year. Right now, we have 2,191 students in the school district. And what does our school district look like? We have, the majority of our students are African-American or black, 72%. 10% of our students are white, almost 11% are Hispanic. Some of our students, a small sample, identify as multiracial. And then we have a very small group, which are Asian, of Asian descent. In terms of students with disabilities, we do have 377 students this year who have been identified as receiving special education, which is about 17.3% of our enrollment this year. For English learners, 64 students in our school district are identified as English learners, meaning they've taken the home language survey and they've been identified as not speaking English as their first language. We have 16 different languages and these range from Spanish to Mandarin to Haitian Creole. So we have increasing numbers of, increasing diversity in our schools. With regard to free reduced-price meals, we have this year 1,212 students at this time that qualify for free or reduced-price meals, which is 56% of our student population. So that gives us a little bit of a picture of our students. What I wanna share with you is a quote here, and this is from a document from our State Department of Education. Because before we talk about our Smarter Balanced Results, it's important to understand how those results are shared with us from the State Department. And this is a really important message. The achievement levels, levels 1 to 4, which are the levels that students' scores are grouped into, and the accompanying descriptions of performance serve as a starting point for discussion about the performance of individual students in mathematics and English language arts or literacy across the content areas. There are other methods that students, teachers and parents can also use to evaluate the academic progress of students and schools, such as scale scores, which is what we receive from Smarter Balanced Assessments, growth models, which are another indicator within the Smarter Balanced Results, local assessments, which are assessments that we choose that are part of our curriculum, but also that many of our skills qualified and wonderful teachers create, as well as portfolios of student work. And those portfolios of student work are, you have samples of that when we have parent-teacher conferences and our teachers can share with our parents and our families how students are growing and all the different skills that our students are demonstrating. And this is just directly from the document from our State Department of Education. And the reason I think this really echoes for me is because Dr. Bracene Harris once told me that there are dangers in a single story. And I think that certainly as an assessment person, I think there are limitations in a single number. And so I want us to keep that in mind as we move forward and look at this assessment, our results tonight. And what I wanna share with you is how the state defines the different levels of the assessment. So level four is what we're all aiming for. Every single kid wants to succeed and do well on this. And every single teacher wants our students to thrive and to grow and to perform at the highest levels. Now, tonight in our presentation, we have the mathematics achievement level descriptors. These are very similar to the language arts achievement level descriptors. And I just want to bring your attention to grades 6 to 8 and grades 3 to 5 here. And this is excerpted right from this document, which our board members have been provided with. But level four is the level that indicates exceeds the achievement level. So here the state says, the student has exceeded the achievement level for, in this case, mathematics, expected for this grade. Students performing at this level are demonstrating advanced progress toward mastery. Students performing at this level are demonstrating advanced progress toward mastery of mathematics, knowledge, and skills. Students performing at this level are on track for likely success in high school and college coursework and career training." So that is how the State Department is defining Level Four. And this is, the Smarter Balanced Assessment is a very rigorous assessment, I just want to say that as well. Defining Level Three, Level Three meets the achievement level. The student has met the achievement level for, in this case, mathematics, expected for this grade. Students performing at this level are demonstrating progress toward mastery of mathematics, knowledge, and skills. Students performing at this level are on track for likely success in high school and college coursework or career training. So Levels Three and Four are what the state now says is meeting grade level expectations. In the past, the proficiency level is now what the state is calling Level Two. In this level, students are approaching the achievement level. This, the language here says, "The student has nearly met the achievement level for mathematics, expected for this grade. Students performing at this level require further development toward mastery of mathematics, knowledge, and skills. Students performing at this level will likely need support to get on track for success in high school and college coursework or career training." And Level One, the state has labeled as "does not meet achievement level." And here, the state says, "The student has not yet met the achievement level for mathematics, expected for this grade. Students performing at this level require substantial improvement toward mastery of mathematics, knowledge, and skills. Students performing at this level will likely need substantial support to get on track for success in high school and college coursework or career training." So to be clear, none of these levels are identified as failing. They are all about student progress and about students getting on track and being on track for college, career, and post-high school. So that said, I want to invite our principals up to share results with us. And our first principal tonight is Jocelyn Poglich, our principal at Metacomit Elementary School. So Jocelyn, could you join me?
Okay, so on this slide, I know it's, the numbers are a little small, but we have our results for ELA and math for the 2017-18 school years for grades three and grade four. So, they don't have the, should I read the numbers off? Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted, you're not, if you're right next to a monitor, you can see. If you're further away from a monitor, it's hard, so I just want to make sure I let you know what's there. So in grade three, if you look across, so we have 2017-2018. So from grade, in grade three, from the 2017 to the 2018 year, the percent of students meeting or exceeding targets went from 30.5% to 53.3%, which is an increase of 22.8 percentage points. In fourth grade in ELA from 2017-18, in 2017, we had 42.5% of our students meeting or exceeding target, and then in 2018, we had 31.2%, which is a decrease of 11.3 percentage points. In math, for grade three, 2017 to 18, we went from 31.1% to 42.6%, which was an increase of 11.5 percentage points. And in grade four, from 17 to 18, we were at 23% to 21.9%, which was a slight decline of 1.1 percentage points. So the strengths that we identified at Metacomit, and I have joined, for those of you who don't know, I joined Bloomfield Public Schools in January, so I have been a principal at Metacomit since that time and a member of the Bloomfield Public School staff. So certainly, there are some things to celebrate, there are some things and observations that are noted, and we have a lot of next steps to work on. So our particular strengths are in grade three. In ELA, we increased from 30.5% to 53.3% in meeting exceeding targets, which was a 22.8 percentage point improvement, which is a celebration. In 2018, grade three ELA, our ELA scores exceeded the state average by .3 percentage points, so we are certainly proud and see that as a strength. In grade three math, there was an increase from 31.1% to 42.6, meeting or exceeding targets, which was an 11.5 percentage point increase. Some of the observations that came out of looking at this data, and we do take, we looked at both the strengths and areas that we need to grow, in grade four, there was a significant decrease, or a decrease from 42.5% to 31.2% of students meeting or exceeding targets, which was an 11.3 percentage point decline. So that is something we do take seriously, and we are looking at what instructional practices need to be enhanced, what could be improved upon. And this year, our next steps include employing the academic review to examine student work, and that was a process that was implemented across the district last year, so we are maintaining that process. We are engaging or continuing to engage in the data team process with fidelity. We have a five-step process protocol that we follow, and we do have members of central office that come and attend our data team meetings with the purpose of trying to be aligned and create consistency across the district with that process. At Metacomit, the master schedule was rearranged so that we're able to provide a personalized learning block for students, so that we can address academic interventions as well as provide extensions. We've had increased time for teachers to collaborate around their instruction curriculum and data. We are currently underway, are doing revisions for our curriculum units of study in both grades three and four, and we are constantly reviewing and updating to make sure that they are ground in the standards and making sure the assessments are aligned to the standards and the instruction. We were also fortunate enough, we have the addition of an instructional coach to support our classroom teachers. This year, our instructional coach is Mrs. Carly Payne. She was a longtime teacher at Metacomit, and now she's moved from the classroom to the coach position, and we did also fill that classroom position, so we're still maintaining seven teachers in each grade level. And she is able to provide ongoing professional development in the area of core instruction. We are currently implementing the updated scientifically research-based intervention model, which underwent revision this summer, so it's a district initiative. We are also implementing collaborative and proactive solutions, CPS model, which is based on Dr. Ross Green's Lost at School. That, too, is a district initiative that helps support the social-emotional piece of student education. We are consistently focusing on small group instruction in both reading and math, and we continue to have support for those social-emotional needs provided by, his name is Mr. Peter Pecora, our comprehensive intervention specialist. So there are a lot of things happening at Metacomit. All right, oh, I'm sorry, and I'd like to introduce my colleague, Principal Williams of Case.
You want to ask a question?
Oh, question?
You want to wait to end?
Yeah.
Yes, please. Yeah.
At the end, okay, perfect.
They're not going anywhere.
But our coding traces us.
Good evening to the families in the audience, the teachers who are able to come this evening, board chair, superintendent, board members, thank you guys for coming this evening. Parents who have heard me say this before, it's the same heartfelt again. When you look at Carmenary's Intermediate School, you're going to notice English Language Arts and Math as well. If you look across the top, you're going to notice that we went from, in 2017 to 2018, for the fifth grade students, from 36.6 to 40.4. This is a traditional view of the, of the testing, so this is looking at two separate sets of students in front of you. So they went up 3.8% in fifth grade to fifth grade. In English Language Arts for sixth grade, for different sets of students, you're going to notice that there's a 36% decrease. And I'll talk about that in the implications and observations section as well. In mathematics, when you look at grade five, we went from 24 points, sorry, from 13.9 to 24.6 was a 10.7% increase, again, the traditional view, fifth grade to fifth grade, there was a 10.7% increase. And in sixth grade, you're going to notice a 15.9% decrease, again, sixth grade to sixth grade, a different set of students. And I'll talk about that in the strengths and observations as well. If you look at the strengths, again, talking about the traditional view, grade five English Language Arts increased from 36.6 to 40.4%, meeting and exceeding targets, which is a 3.8% improvement. In grade five, again, math, from 13.9 to 24.6, meeting and exceeding targets, that 10.7% increase. I own my positives, and I own the implications and observations, so I want to make this very clear about sixth grade math. Sixth grade math cohort, the students from fifth grade in 2017 moved to sixth grade in 2018. Those set of students went from 13.9% to 33.3%. So when you look at the cohort data, there was a drastic increase of 19.4% for those students. In saying that, I also own the decreases here. In both ELA and math in 2018, for grade six, the scores decreased. Now, it's a different set of students, but it tells us a lot about what we're seeing. So when we do cohort analysis, and when we do the analysis from grade level to grade level, that's what's giving us the information of where we need to go next, and that information is part of the next steps. The cohort ELA declined from 36.6, meeting and exceeding, to 24.7. Now, that is cohort data. So the grade five students moved up to grade six, they had an 11.9% decrease, not 36% for the same set of students. Those were different sets of students. So the 11.9% decrease is what we are really focused on right now, figuring out what happened for those fifth grade to sixth grade. So in the next steps section, I'm a bit of a nerd, so I'm conducting a lot with my teachers that cohort analysis to see the students who are sitting in front of us and what's going on. We're employing the academic review process and the data team process. Now, you heard from Mrs. Poglich about the academic review process. The academic review process, we actually even streamlined it a little bit more this year, specifically looking at student work to figure out what's being presented to them and the growth they're making each time we meet. The data team process is really important. This is, again, streamlined from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade, making sure that from the information we are gaining from the data team process, we are implementing the scientifically research-based interventions, making sure that our students are receiving those tiered intervention supports necessary. I talked about that cohort analysis and how it's going to facilitate effective instructional practices for that grade six ELA. It's also helping us in grade six math figure out how we had such major improvements for those grade five students to grade six in math with that 19.4% increase. The teachers are absolutely a huge part of that work. That is where we meet, we talk about each individual student, the work that they are doing, and we figure out what our next steps are, which we've talked about, some of them here. We are, we have hired, on a short-term basis, a workshop, workshop model coach who's helping us with our workshop model. We use the Lucy Cawkins units of study from Columbia University Teachers College, so that's helping us make sure that we are aligned with the curriculum and making sure the standards are aligned. I talked about the SRBI, which is Scientifically Research-Based Intervention, and you've heard about collaborative and proactive solutions. So we have, for a very long time, focused on the academic side of SRBI, which is Scientifically Research-Based Interventions. We have not done as much with the social-emotional side of that. So partnered together, we have academics, and now we have collaborative and proactive solutions to work on that social-emotional side of the model. One last thing, which you don't see on here, I did not present last time because we were still finding data on it, we were able to move one of my fifth grade teachers up to sixth grade and kind of restructure based on some numbers. One of my teachers, Mrs. Valorelli, those of you who have taken math at Carmenary's Intermediate School before, has actually moved into a role where she's working with students who were at the below basic level for Smarter Balance last year. She actually has two math blocks, and the improvements for these students are already showing great increase. During our personalized learning block, she is then taking our students who are showing exceeding grade level expectations, and she's working to enrich and enhance them as well. So this model is actually focusing on both sides of the spectrum, so that the classroom teachers can also focus on students who are approaching and meeting, giving them what they need to continue moving up in the growth model. And it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Ellis.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board, viewing audience, families, and community. It's an honor to be here tonight as the proud principal of Carmenary's Middle School. I'll be presenting in the same format as my partners and colleagues, but I'll use the, this slide here as a reference point and basically speak to the strengths, observations, and implications, and next steps as we have done tonight. Without going into the data as deep, I'll go straight to the analysis piece. The strengths that are included with our Carmenary's Middle School students are that our sixth, that our seventh grade students in ELA increased from 35.2% to 46.5% meeting or exceeding targets, which means we had an 11.3 percentage point improvement between the 17-18 school years. And also in seventh grade, which is showing great promise in the area of math as well, we rose from 21 percentage points to 29.7 percentage points, I mean, meeting or exceeding targets, and 8.7 percentage point increase between the two years. We have some observations and implications that we really need to focus and hone in on, and this is with our grade eight math decline from 31.7 percentage points to 31.5 percentage points, meeting and/or exceeding targets, which is a .2 percentage point decrease. Though it's a slight decrease, it's not moving in the right direction, it's not where we would like them to be overall. And that speaks to our 2018 performance overall, ELA and math, as far from the district's target, but also far from my expectation as the principal of Carmenary's Middle School. So as the principal and the teachers, I take full responsibility for the growth and declines. Moving forward, we will employ the academic review process and the data team processes to examine student work, determine how best to enhance our curriculum, instruction, and our assessment process. Also, we'll utilize the additional staffing resources that are new to our school to reduce class size and target instruction overall. I think in the particular areas, we have an additional language arts teacher and an additional math teacher to help support instruction in those areas. Those two areas, okay. Implement a small group instruction through the SRBI process, you heard that from my colleagues earlier, excuse me, earlier, and I'm excited about that because it's much needed. We need to really focus in on our kids' needs and isolate the issues so that we can address them. We need to provide, we're also going to be providing extended learning opportunities after school. I'm happy to say that we, I think this is about our fifth or sixth year implementing this after-school program, and each year it's gotten better. But this year and last year, the focus has been on the math and sciences and manufacturing. I think that's the direction that we need to move forward in. And then, last but not least, we talked about the collaborative and proactive solutions to address our social-emotional needs of to address our social-emotional needs of our students. I'm excited about that as well because I do think we spend a lot of time not understanding how our students learn best and the behaviors that they exhibit in classrooms when they're frustrated. So I think we need to focus on that a little bit more, and I'm happy that we have brought this initiative to our district. Thank you. I would like to now introduce Nicola Poplin from GEMS.
Konichiwa. Vaan. Hello, everyone. I am the proud principal of the Global Experience Magnet School, and I am here to present our Smarter Balance Assessment Data for the 2018 school year. For the sixth grade in ELA, forty percent of our students met or exceeded the target for, for success, which is a decline of eight percent from 2017. In the seventh grade, forty-eight percent of our students met or exceeded the target, which was a twenty-two percent increase. For our eighth grade in ELA, our students went from forty-one percent meeting or exceeding the target to fifty-three percent, which was a decline of twelve percent. As you can see from the data, we have things that we can celebrate, but we also know that we have a lot of work to do in order to approach our goal of eighty percent of our students meeting or exceeding the targets. In mathematics, for the sixth grade, in 2017, thirty percent of our students met or exceeded the target, and in 2018, ten percent met the target, which was a decline of twenty percent. In grade seven, six percent met or exceeded the target, but in 2018, twenty-four percent met or exceeded the target for an eighteen percent increase. And for the eighth grade in math, in 2017, seventeen percent met or exceeded the target. And in 2018, four percent met the target, which was a decline of thirteen percent. As I said earlier, and I think my colleagues will stand with me and say that we all accept our data, we know that we have a lot of work to do, and we are dedicated and we are committed to our students in helping them to achieve their goals. So we have work to do. So what are our next steps? Our next steps are to continue a comprehensive analysis of the data. We are continuing to dig deeper into our data to figure out what it is for each individual student that that student may need in order to be successful. We are doing this through our data teams. We are also doing this through our clinical teams and our SRBI teams to determine which students need the targets and what specifically do they need in order to increase their, their performance. We are also employing the data team process with fidelity. We meet as a data team in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade for ELA on the second Tuesday of every month, and in mathematics on the fourth Tuesday. And we are knee-deep in this data, looking to see what we need to do. As I said before, we are, we're clearly accepting all of the data that we have collected here, but we know what we need to do and where we need to find the information in order to help our students succeed because we are all here for our students. We will continue to facilitate the vertical team planning within the middle school grade levels with respect to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And basically what that means is that in our ELA and in our math classes, our teachers are meeting once a week to determine how best to progress a student through the sixth grade to the seventh grade into the eighth grade, and to make sure that the curriculum is in line, also to make sure that our instructional practices are sound and effective, and to make sure that our students are well aware of how they can be assessed to show that they are improving. In addition, we are also implementing the updated Scientifically Research-Based Intervention SRBI model. With extreme fidelity, we have an SRBI interventionist, and she is working one-on-one with, one-on-one in either tier-three instruction or in small group instruction. She also works with our teachers to make sure that they are getting the best out of their instructional practices. And we are also implementing the Collaborative and Proactive Solutions CPS model. Next week, October 24th, our entire team is going to be working with the social-emotional side of the SRBI model, which is the CPS. We are going to be working with the ALSUP, which is used to determine what the lagging skills and unsolved problems are that might address why a student is acting in a manner that is not productive to learning. So the student may have some social-emotional concerns that we need to address. They may have some lagging skills that they haven't, they don't, they haven't achieved that skill yet, or they haven't learned that skill, so we can't expect our students to implement something that they haven't learned. We have to teach them what their skills are and help them to get around that so that they can be successful. And I don't know about you, but I know it's hard for me to focus on work when I have emotional issues or social issues or things going on outside of school. So we need to make sure that we are clearing the table for our kids so that they can get into the work that we know that they can do. At this time, I'm finished with my presentation. Dr. Silver?
Thank you.
I pass the baton.
Thank you. Ms. Poplin. And I want to thank all of our principals for sharing your results with our community, with us tonight. Our support for our schools is ongoing. We are supporting principals from the central office, continuing to support data analysis, and of course, the data teaming process is one part of that, but also providing our classroom teachers with as much data as, as they can ask for and, and they need. We also have targeted professional development to support our teachers as well, and many of our teachers bring in fantastic skills and are able to share those skills with their colleagues and peers. We are engaging the year-two implementation of our academic review process. We are working through the alignment of curriculum, instruction, and assessment to the Common Core state standards. And we do have focused site visits to our schools to provide coaching, monitoring, and supporting the work that's happening in our schools. We attend instructional data teams, and we also conduct classroom walkthroughs. While we have some challenges, we also have some highlights. And we did see double-digit increases in English Language Arts and Math. We're one of nineteen Connecticut districts to reach double-digit increases on our SAT total scores for both subjects, our total scores in math and evidence-based reading and writing. For the Smarter Balanced, we did see double-digit increases for grade three English Language Arts and Math, and we did see that our grade three students did perform above the state average. We also saw double-digit increases in grade five math and an increase in grade five English Language Arts, and a double-digit increase in grade seven Language Arts and Math. And so now, we'd like to turn this over to our board for questions.
Questions. Mr. Frybin.
Dr. Silver, thank you, thank you, staff. I don't know where to begin here. There's a couple mentions about celebration. I'm a little at ease with that. Questions here. Grade five, percentage meeting or exceeding target, forty point four. Does that mean sixty, fifty-nine point something did not meet the exceeding target?
That's correct. They are approaching, and the level, level four is exceeding, level three is meeting. So that is combined, and that's what the meeting or exceeding target, percent meeting or exceeding target adds up to. But we do have large numbers of students who are approaching as well, and students who are below target.
You know, I graduated, just like John did and someone else, I graduated from this, from Bloomfield Schools. I went to kindergarten right in this room here, all the way through high school. I'm very concerned about all this. And one thing I do remember, I could go through all my grade books from year to year to year, and I could actually see which classes I did well in, if I liked the teacher, if I didn't. If I didn't, if there was a problem, I probably didn't do well. How are we doing? What things have we put in effect to evaluate our teaching skills and their development? So they're making sure that they're teaching what they're supposed to be teaching to our young people? What have, what do we have in place for that?
We have a comprehensive professional learning community, a group of teachers that come together to plan professional development for the entire district based on the data and where the challenge areas are. We've brought in local, statewide, and national experts to support the professional learning that's happening for our staff. We have programs such as the Guided Workshop Model out of Columbia University, and then we have additional support that we brought in. And yes, of course, teacher evaluation data as well.
So we have a mechanism also to evaluate our teachers' skills and how they are preparing what they're supposed to be teaching to our young people?
Yes. Yes. Our teacher evaluation system actually has eight classroom visits that are made by the evaluator every year, and they are unannounced visits, so teachers can't prepare for them. They just have to prepare great teaching all the time.
And what do we do when we find one of our staff is not preparing our young people for what they're supposed to be learning? What's our steps there? Do we replace them? Do we find someone to co-teach them? What do we do?
We have...
I don't think this is funny. I see some full throat, smiling. What do we, you know, what do we put in place when we find that we don't have instructors that are actually teaching our young people?
So we do have, and some of our increases in staffing this year include coaches. For example, the coach at Metacomet, Ms. Payne. If we were to find a teacher that is not teaching students to the standard that we would expect, the coach would visit the classroom and begin a process of supporting that teacher with their learning. At the same time, the principal, the evaluator, would provide other, other supports to that teacher to help that teacher progress forward with their skill set.
Now, let's go the other way. My last question, I promise, at this point. Do we have anything in effect at various grade levels where we take a young person with any one of our teachers, and each one of them listens to how they read or prepare their math?
Absolutely. We have that two times a year. Students are sat down individually with a teacher to read to that teacher, to go through. We, it's called the Fontes and Penel Benchmarking System, and it's a very comprehensive reading assessment that's conducted for all of our early literacy up until actually fifth and sixth grade. Sometimes the older students, only the ones that are struggling with their reading, have that, that one-on-one Fontes and Penel assessment. But that's the early literacy assessment that we use, so that is one-on-one. In addition, for our older students, we do have personalized learning blocks which are designed, and our principal spoke about the Scientifically Research-Based Intervention Program that was revamped this summer by a team of teachers, as well as Anne Marie Cullenin, our curriculum specialist, supported the process of revamping our Scientifically Research-Based Intervention Manual, and we have implemented it this year so that our students do have a block of time where an adult, a classroom teacher, is working with them one-on-one regarding their skills.
Is there a possibility of upping that twice a year to maybe three times a year? So, I mean, some of these, you know, these targets are, you know. I think we need some help there. I think our young people are trying to reach out there. If there's a problem, I think we need, we need to spend more time with them. I think twice a year is not enough.
That, we, I'm sorry, the assessment is twice a year, but for students who show progress...
No, I'm saying assessment. I think we need to assess them more than twice a year.
The, the scientific, the SRBI support happens on a regular basis, on a, on a weekly basis for students, if not daily, depending on the school and the schedule there.
Thank you, Dr. Silver.
Mr. Icke.
Mr. Chairman. Dr. Silver, and the chief academic officers of those institutions of learning here in the town of Bloomfield. I'm speaking from, my question is from a historic perspective, having been here off and on for most, over fifteen years. Back when Paul Coates was here, was a superintendent, and I've been involved in two superintendent searches. And I guess my first question, what is a cohort? And secondly, when the community, from a historical perspective, given the reputation of the Bloomfield Schools, academics was the, was the cry of the day for whoever we brought in for superintendent. Now, to say that Dr. Thompson hasn't made progress, he has made progress, but certainly we are, we have come to, it appears from the test scores, and let no one fool you, you are judged by your test scores in the school system. And, and we have a mixed bag here. Is everyone in your building feeling the negative test score, the declines? From, from the janitor, from the secretary, from the teachers, from the students, are they all bought into the idea that we've got to move up the school system? That, that as academic leaders of those institutions, you carry a tremendous weight. You carry the weight of the community on your shoulders. So what is a cohort? And not just, I know we're doing a detailed analysis, but at the building level, what are you doing so that we can turn this thing around? We were making tremendous progress, and I will not deny that, I'll deny that, say that to anybody. Because I was here when there's only thirteen percent of the students were scoring on his exam. So we definitely have moved up, but at, at the building level, because that's where it's happening, is at the building level, it's got to be a comprehensive team effort. Please tell me what you are personally doing so we can move this thing up.
Mr. Icke, I want to assure you that the sense of urgency is tremendous across our entire district. Our educational professionals have responded with, very, in a very somber way, but with a sense of urgency and a sense of preparedness to take on this challenge and to move performance forward. And have really, because we had the results in June, our educators were able to look at their student results, reflect on them over the summer, and to begin planning the school year, coming into the school year, on fire to build things forward. And I, I'm speaking here for our principals, but I think that I share that perspective that's happening in their buildings with the attention to detail. The program that Ms. Valarelli's engaging in, and where she's brought the kids that have the greatest amount of challenge into small groups, and she's working with them to really build those foundational skills. But to go to your first question, which is what is a cohort? So we all belong to a graduating class. This year, our graduating class is the class of 2019. So they are a cohort. They move together as a graduating class, hopefully stay together, from kindergarten, pre-K, kindergarten, up through twelfth grade. So as they progress through that sequence of grades, we can track their performance. And we do have small, relatively small numbers of students. We're not a big school district with 2,191 students. We have relatively small numbers, which can be affected, can show very different performance from the class of 2019 to the class of 2020 or 2021. So as these groups of students move forward, and we all learn and grow from one another, you know, some groups are stronger than others, but we are working diligently with every group. And the progress that we've made, I, Dr. Thompson, when he arrived here in 2011, our graduation rate was seventy-four percent. Our high school graduation rate now is ninety point one percent, and it far outstrips the state average graduation rate. And, and that, and the growth that we've seen on the SAT scores for our high school students has, has just shown wonderful growth. We have them beginning in eighth grade, taking the PSAT eight-nine from the college board. And we do this because we want them to understand the rigor of that test and how they need to prepare themselves, and how they need to have a sense of urgency. Our learners need to have a sense of urgency. And our, our teachers are able to get the data from the college board, PSAT eight-nine. They get all of the items back, and students are able to dig into those items, identify patterns of errors. And there's actually a process in place at the high school to help students address the five lowest as a group, the five lowest questions that they, that the ninth graders got, the five lowest questions in math and questions in language arts. And they're, they address them as a whole group, and then they individually work, they create a SMART goal, and they, a SMART goal that is specific, that the student says, "I'm going to increase my PSAT score by twenty points." And then, it's, the idea of, "I'm going to read more," is, is not, that's not what is acceptable. We actually have the students have very specific, "I'm going to read informational text about biology because I'm interested in biology." So we ask the students to really un- So we ask the students to really unpack what reading more means, and we're, "Study harder." Well, what does it mean to study harder? And Dr. Bailey has our students beginning in sixth grade to twelfth grade take a close reading inventory and really track their reading patterns of strategies to build their capacity to engage those strategies. Our principals did share tonight strengths, because we do have strengths, the observations and implications, the areas that we really need to work on, as well as their work plans in their buildings. And our team at Central Office is going into the buildings and supporting their implementation of this because there is a tremendous sense of urgency in this school district.
Also, I'd like to value-add to some of the things that Dr. Silver shared about what's going on in the schools. There is a heightened sense of urgency in terms of student achievement across the board. Our leaders, school leaders, are really focused. They have a listening focus on student achievement. What you heard tonight in terms of next steps is just an outline. I've met with all the principals, and we've done a deep dive relative to the data, unpacking that data. And you've heard me say that the reason for unpacking that data is to identify the causal factors as to why some of these students are not performing as, to the level that they should be. I'm very confident that there will be tremendous increases as the end of this year, as evidenced by the 2019 SMART analysis. And that sense of urgency is not only with our school leaders, it's also with the staff, with the teaching staff, with the support staff. So there is clearly a sense of urgency across the staff being at each school. And they have identified only the outline. There is a tremendous amount of work that is going on, that's being led by our school leaders. So they just gave you an outline today, but I would encourage you, if you want to know more, that you can sit and talk with the leaders, and they can give you a comprehensive picture in terms of what's going on relative in their school with Houston. And you've heard, one of the next steps is the student academic review. And that is something that was shared last year. We just implemented this, and we've expanded it. It was shared with the board at one of our curriculum committee meetings. It also was shared at the board. And it's a really comprehensive way of looking at what our students are doing. It's really looking at authentic student work. Each teacher is required to maintain a portfolio, and also reading, and also math. And in those portfolios, you have work, authentic work. You have classwork, you have homework, any or all assessments, and also projects that are aligned to the standards that our students are assessed on. So these are just some of the kinds of things that our leaders and our support staff and our teachers are engaged in relative to addressing, improving student performance across the board.
And, Mr. Chairman, I should say that this is our third comprehensive review of these test scores.
Yep.
At the curriculum, at the committee meetings, which we have every month, I think it's the last third Tuesday of each month, we had, we were here almost two or three hours going over, pouring over these reports. Then we went to the town council administrative subcommittee, took, heard parent comment, took parent comment in, digested the parent comment, and here we are again today, hearing this report. So let no one, let no one leave this room tonight to think that this board is not committed to moving this school system forward. No matter what your opinion is, and I respect your opinion, but I take extreme outrage to any idea that this board is not committed to full student participation in moving this board here. I was here when it was thirteen percent. I was here with Paul Coops, that was it, with Paul Coops and Bunny. That was it. There was no human resources, there was no curriculum, it was Paul Coops and Bunny, and this thing was tamped down. I was here, I remember it. We used to be there in this building, we used to be here five or six times a week getting nothing. Now, Dr. Thompson came in, and he has moved us forward. And the board and the staff realize it, and we're taking this thing, trying to move it ahead. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Icke. Are there other comments? Mr. Davis?
Yes, I thank you, Dr. Thompson, for what you just shared, and to the principals, and I do truly appreciate it. And being, having been in this district for a very long time, and looking at what was shared, and participating in the several committee meetings and the town council, and to see these numbers, and, Mr. Fryman, what you shared, this, these numbers are devastating to me. They hurt me that our children are not progressing at all levels regardless, and something is not working. And I do appreciate, like you said, what the principals are sharing, taking ownership for our failures, taking ownership for the increases as well as the decreases, and having a plan in place. But it's obvious that the plans that we've had in place over the years are a little too far-fetched. In my opinion, it seems like we need to get back to basics. And I'm going to go to what some of the parents shared, in particular about classroom sizes, about allocating resources. And we are following a lot of models and all of these things, and at some point, we could just get back to the basics of teaching our children how to learn. And I want to find out something else that you mentioned, and which has stuck with me about the free and reduced lunch. And that continues to be a point that's mentioned, and I don't know if that's because we expect that the free and reduced lunch meals means when we got twelve-hundred, twelve, one thousand two hundred and twelve students that qualify for free lunch. Is that self-reported? That information is self-reported. So if I say that I qualify, who verifies that?
There's a staff member that needs a certain paperwork to receive, there's a process in place where there is, she does need some evidence in order to...
She does need evidence. So there is evidence that's produced that says that the household that says they qualify for free lunch actually qualifies for free lunch.
Mm-hmm.
There is a, there is a process in place that verifies that.
And that's reported out to the state.
It's reported out to the state?
Yeah.
Okay, and they verify it, is what I'm saying. Because that seems to be an issue. And then, my last point, and I just want, for the record, is that this CPS model, is that something new that we have just coming up, where we're going to start looking at the kids' social and economic or whatever, their issues that could be, that could be causing them not to progress? Is that what we're looking at, this model, or the CPS model?
Well, one of our, we have really two pieces of our district accountability plan, climate, that priority, and family and community engagement. And the work that we do in those priorities called for a stronger model in terms of supporting our learners and our staff with regard to climate and culture in the building. Our director of student support services researched this and brought this model forward, and we began to explore it. There were other models as well, but the, there's very good evidence that the model is effective and that we've had staff that's begun training processes in order to be able to adopt the model district-wide.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we are not making excuses. We need results, because we can't just say that they get free lunch, or they got social economic problems. Because I used to, down in New Haven, there were poverty-stricken children who went on to Harvard and Yale. So the opportunity, regardless of your surroundings, is there. We just have to make sure that, to me, we go back to basics and understand and reach our children and the families. We have to reach our children and our families in a better way so that they're learning, because the progress and these numbers that you all have shared and the principals have shared, and again, I do appreciate the principals coming up and taking ownership. And I know, I've been in this district a long time, I know there's some great teachers here, I know there's some great families here, that we all want our children to be successful. That's all we want. And I think we, as a board, we, as a community, you, as Central Office staff, have an obligation to make sure that that happens. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, I do want to share that in the past, there have been times when our free, reduced-price meal students have outperformed the students who don't qualify for free, reduced-price meals. That is, that is something that the state has recognized Bloomfield's performance for in the past. And so we anticipate being able to show equal performance regardless of free, reduced-price meal status.
Yeah, I was just curious as to why it's always mentioned as a part of your, you know, when you need a presentation, they talk about foster care, they talk about free and reduced lunches. And I just want to make sure that that's not being used as an excuse. And what you just shed may shed light, because that was really where I'm coming from, because people with free and reduced lunch do perform well.
They absolutely do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Go ahead.
We go back to basics, community, home, and school, there's a relationship. And I know years ago, parents may not have had the education, but if the teacher told them that they needed to help their child learn something, the parent was actively involved in it. So I think we need to be more collaborative. So as, if I have a child in school, maybe I need to talk to the teacher and say, "What can I do at home that's going to help my child perform better at school?" As a parent, I'm going to engage my child to say, "I want you to use better behavior. I don't want that teacher calling home, saying to me that you're not doing what you're supposed to do, that you're acting up, and then there will be consequences for it." So it's really a relationship is what we need to work towards, the blaming, and you doing this, and you should be doing that. We should be working together collaboratively, because I think we're all wanting the same thing, and that's better results for the students here in Bloomfield Public Schools. So it's a collaboration. It's not me saying, "It's your fault, it's your fault, it's your fault." It's like, how do we come together to make the results the way we want them to be? So it's everybody working together, not people sitting back saying, "Well, you know, you all should be doing that, and you should be doing that, you should be..." No, let's see what you can do also besides tell me what I need to be doing. What are you doing besides that? So let's be more collaborative in working together to get the results that we all want. We've looked at the numbers, the principals have a job to do, the teachers have a job to do, community is involved, parents have a job to do, the cafeteria workers, because everybody, what I've heard, has a part to play, other than pointing fingers, because that gets us nowhere. We get nowhere doing that, and we get nowhere being angry at folks for whatever the reason is. We need to be working together, because we all want the same thing.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Please.
My comment basically is, basically just this. I don't see it as pointing fingers. I think what, I think what's going on right here is, you know, the public elected the board to be their representatives for the school system. And, you know, the way I, the way I look at it is, they want, they want, they want the best for their kids. I mean, we all want, we all want the best for our kids. And I don't look at it as them blaming us, or we're blaming the parents, or whatever. Like you said, we all, we all need to work together. We also got to look at today's society. I mean, right now, a lot of parents are really looking for the teachers, you know, to, maybe it's, maybe it's not right to do maybe more, whatever, because a lot of people can't survive on one income. They got to have two or three jobs just to, just to get by. And then when you get home from, if you're working two or three jobs just to get by, and you get home from school, and your child, you're tired. You're, I mean, whatever. I'm not making a excuse for them, whatever and stuff, but I do agree with you that we do need, we do need to work, we do need to work together. But on the, on the other hand, you know, with the, with the principals and with the school, I just honestly feel like, you know, we have made a lot of positive steps, but we also took some negative ones. And sometimes, when we take the negative ones, I look at it as, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to talk about it, we don't want to see it. All we want to hear is just the positives. And I could be wrong, but that's just, you know, how, how I feel. I'm just saying to the principals, who I believe is doing the best that they can do, and I, I mean, I have to give you guys credit. At least you guys know, you know, where you're feeling, feel, feel in that, and you're taking the steps to correct the, to correct the problems. And, you know, whatever we as a board can do to help you, I mean, you got to let us, you have to let us know, you know, what we can do to help you, because you, the teachers, the principals, the tutors, whoever else is all in that school system, from the janitors all the way down, these kids are our future. They're our future. Whether we want to face it or not, if they don't end up doing the proper thing, then they're going to end up where I used to work at, in the correction center, or did.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Silver. Approval of the agreement for child nutrition programs, Mr. Guzman?
In your packet, I believe you have Form ED-099, which is the Permanent Single Agreement to Participate in Child Nutrition Programs. Just, we reviewed this at the finance committee of the board on September 26th. There's a quick review. This is a, an update, if you will, of the agreement that has been developed by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, requiring all state departments of education to reissue this agreement. The agreement last was entered into in 1999, so it's eighteen, nineteen years ago, and since then, there have been updates to a variety of statutes, a variety of regulations. And this here is a new agreement that is more robust in terms of responsibilities of the State Department of Education, as well as the child nutrition program in Bloomfield. The old version is obsolete, and in order to continue in the child nutrition program, this agreement has to be approved and submitted to the State Department of Education by November 15th of this year.
Mr. Walters?
Yes, I move to approve the agreement for child nutrition programs from ED-099 as presented.
Second. They're properly moved, and second. Are there any questions? Any questions? Hearing none, seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? It is so ordered. Policy for initial reading, reporting of child abuse and neglect, 5141.4.
Public Act 1817 was an act requiring behavior analysts to be mandated reporters of suspected child abuse and neglect. The policy before you includes the behavior analyst among the various other district staff that are required by law to report suspected child abuse and neglect. And since we've added those categories, new category into the policy, we've also updated the policy to be more extensive in terms of procedures and outlines, and so what we've done here is, we're asking the board at its next meeting, at the second reading, to adopt this, this new policy, and which will substitute the old policy, which is the last two pages, I believe, of your handout. So it's, it's more extensive, more prescriptive, as required by state law.
Okay, because we did see this at our last committee meeting. So today represents the first official reading. It will be on our agenda for our committee meetings next week, and for a second reading, and I expect it will come before the board in November for full approval. Thank you. Any que, before I, any questions? Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Guzman. CAVE update, I don't, the only CAVE update I have is just the mention of the CAVE convention November 16th and 17th, and hopefully many of our board members will be able to, to attend. It's very worthwhile updating information that it's important for all of us to be aware of. Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, I do, I just got reminded, I have another, oh, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. Okay, yeah, I just, we just did get this update from CAVE, that the Bloomfield School District was awarded the Bonnie Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications. And so we are, our communications has been part of, I think, six different districts were, received this honor, so we will officially get citation at the convention next month. So congratulations to the Board of Education. And that's not us, that's, that's the Central Office folks that put together. Board comments, Mr. Ike?
No comments.
Mr. Freyman?
First of all, I wanted to congratulate Rose Rose, she already left. But congratulations, and I appreciate our parents and our young people and our staff coming out tonight and staying with us, so we can hear you, and you can hear us. We got to do better. You know, we have a lot of work ahead of us, but we got to do better collectively. So I think we can do it. A couple other things, gentlemen here over on my left, I don't know if I'll be able to join you in November's meeting, but at that point, you will be elected as our new registrar of voters.
Oh, I get elected.
Well, I don't think there'll be a problem with that. But I want to state from my heart how much you have meant to me, being on the board with me, and being a friend, and being a mentor all these years, and I am going to miss you.
Thank you.
The Mr. Voice, your thoughts, your concerns, and I guess I'll have to second everything from now on.
Yeah, thank you.
Couple other things, we also got to make sure we keep a check on our, our local buses. I've noticed a couple in the last few weeks going through yellow lights, and I want to make sure our young people are, stay safe. So we do need to, you know, make sure we take a look at our local bus service and that they are maintaining, you know, the rules of the roads. I want to make, I want to make sure we don't have any accidents as other towns have. Lastly, I want to thank Ms. Jamie Green, who's back there working the cameras, the granddaughter of our child, Don Harris. I thank you very much. It's, it's very nice to have our young people get involved with the local TV station, and I commend you for staying with us for the last two hours. Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak. Real quick, I'm going to just touch base on a couple things that I've been wanting to speak about, and in particular, resources, resources being available for our students. We know we had a thorough investigation that was completed up at the high school in regards to some funds that were somewhat not mismanaged, was proven that it was not mismanaged, but I am concerned that we have stipends that we, the attorneys that concluded the investigation said that there needed to be an audit done for the stipends that were being issued up at the high school. And I just want to make sure that we stay on top of that, because the, Mr. Guzman and Dr. Thompson, that was a conclusion of the investigation, that the public funds be monitored by someone, and we have stipends that are being paid for positions that don't really exist, but they're being covered, so I understand that part. But when we have parents that are coming in talking about resources that could be used, and better classroom sizes, I just hope that any stipends that are being paid are used to benefit the students of our school district. That's one thing I want to make sure for public record, that I'm, I put that on public record, that we follow what the investigation concluded, and that someone is auditing the stipends that are being issued up at the high school in particular. I don't know who else gets stipends, so I can only speak to that investigation and that conclusion, and that the audit is being done to make sure, and our classroom sizes. And I also want to apologize for not being able to attend the convention for CAVE. I do have a prior commitment, and I know that the last year when I attended, it was very informative, and I had shared that with Mr. Moore, we had a private conversation that I did learn a lot, I met some great people, and it gave me a better understanding of what your position is on the board. And I will always conclude with that my purpose here on the board is for the students. I hope that we all keep that in mind, that our purpose is for our students and this district. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
I want to say a couple things. The first one is, I just want to really let the parents know, you know, we heard your, we heard your concerns, and I don't want you to think that we are ignoring them, or we're just, you know, just taking it in this area and out there, we're not. Well, you're concerned about, you're concerned about your kids, and we as elected board members are also concerned about your kids, because we want, we want the best for all the kids here that go to the schools here in Bloomfield, and we're going to do everything possible to make sure that that happens. The second thing that I want to say is, I want to thank the board, especially Dr. Thompson, because I know, you know, you came in 2011, and as Mr. Ike was saying, you know, you have done a fantastic job, you know. I don't want you to think that it has gone unnoticed, because it hasn't, okay? So we got to, we have a lot of work to do, but if we all work together, it can and will get done.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Harris. Congratulations, we need to acknowledge everyone who receives acolytes from other organizations that are part of this district, and we sort of brushed through the CAVE Master Board of Education member, so I want us to reiterate and acknowledge Mr. Harris for being recognized by CAVE. Can we just give him a round of applause? So I think we need to continue to congratulate Ms. Rose for all the work that she does and her acknowledgement by the commission, by the commissioner. I think it's a big congratulations to her. We just don't want to, just take these, these opportunities to thank the people that are part of Bloomfield for granted, so I'd like to give Ms. Rose, even though she's not here, another round of applause. And last but not least, congratulations to all those individuals that went in very early childhood magnet school, from the principal to the teachers, to the staff, to the secretary, to the custodian, for the outstanding job that they did with their evaluation. Again, that should be another round of applause. So thank you, thank you all. And yes, we have a lot of work to do, but we can accomplish any work that we need to be done when we do it together, when we do it together, when we work together. And hopefully, moving forward, that's what we will do. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. I want to really say a special thank you to the principals who have come out for a third time and presented this report. Mr. Ike alluded to it before, but they did it in the committee meetings, they also did it in the council education subcommittee meetings, and they came here tonight a third time. So, you know, I thank them, because that's going above and beyond. Congratulations to Rose Rose for her commissioner's literacy award. Congrats to the early learning, early childhood magnet school, Wintonbury. That's a marvelous accomplishment accreditation, and there's a lot of hard work that goes into that. I was involved before I retired with the accreditation report coming from the, for the high school. So I know firsthand what's involved in that, and just how hard everybody has to work. And finally, Mr. Freyman, anytime you see a bus going through a yellow light, or going, driving appropriately, fight if you can to get the number of that bus, and call the board, because they will, they will take care of it too sweet, because, again, the safety of our children is everybody's responsibility. And I agree with you, Mr. Walters, we do need to work together, not separately, not apart, but together. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.